Carolina Cable, the Village Companies, and the Town of Chapel Hill.
I detect myself being amplified. I'm home. Welcome to the first meeting of the Chapel Hill board directors of the Zoological Society. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we're starting a brand-new thing. I hope it'll work out all right. Maybe a lot of people will stay home and watch us there and send us, keep those cards and letters coming in. But glad to see a full house here in person tonight. It's the first time on cable TV. We might even keep on doing that. I think all the members of the council, each one has the appropriate makeup, and I believe we're all wearing the proper shirts. Yellow is gone, and blue and white seem to be the right things. So we're doing the best we can to keep up with modern technology. So at this point, I would like to say that first, we have no ceremonies, except what we've already got here, which is quite a ceremonial in itself. And then we have the public forum now requesting the General Assembly to authorize three new revenue sources: hotel motel tax, real estate transfer tax, admissions tax for facilities with more than 15,000 seats. So at this time, I'll ask Mr. Taylor, our manager, to introduce this subject, and then after that, we will have comments by citizens present, and then to the council and referral. Mr. Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council first discussed this issue at its retreat in early January, and at that time that we do a preliminary report. We did that, and in late January, you called a public hearing for tonight with the purpose of hearing from the public on ways in which we might raise additional revenues for the town, and specifically the consideration of a hotel motel tax, a real estate transfer tax, and an admissions or entertainment tax. In preparation for tonight's meeting, we mailed notices to approximately 70 community groups. I have personally met with the Chamber of Representatives of the Chamber of Commerce, hotel motel operators, university officials, and representatives of the real estate community. We attached to the memorandum the list of those localities that already have authorized the hotel motel tax, and a list of those counties that have been authorized the 1 percent real estate transfer tax. At this time, no localities are authorized to have an admissions or entertainment tax. And Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be appropriate now, if we might hear from the public as to how they perceive these alternative revenue sources.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We will proceed now to the members of the public present who wish to make comments pro or con regarding any one or all of these proposed taxes. Mr. Giddes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Roland Giddes. I'd like to speak on the admissions, or entertainment tax as it's called. Some of you may recall that I urged you to consider this four years ago, at the time you were having a public hearing on the following year's budget. The statement I have to make now is a comprehensive one, but I hope and I believe that it's significantly to the point. At this time, I'd like to speak about three ideas on this particular tax. First is a basic principle that I believe you may share with me in the raising of public revenues. Secondly, the merits of this particular idea as a new revenue source. And finally, the politics that are involved in this, the logic of proceeding to seek such an enactment at this time. First is the principle, and I believe that you have two categories of taxes that the municipality can levy. Some of them are on necessities to a greater or a lesser degree, and some taxes are on luxuries, non-essentials. I think you would prefer to enact taxes on luxuries, all things being equal. Where you can, you'd rather gain your revenues through optional and unnecessary things, and especially through such a tax that would apply only to users, not to the public at large, and more so through a tax that would be paid by all users, all users, and not just citizens, taxpayers of the Town of Chapel Hill. In fact, this tax would be paid mostly, in my judgment, by people who are non-Chapel Hillians. The primary tax that we pay, that you pay and we all pay in Chapel Hill, is on our property, on shelter, a necessity of life. It's on real and personal property, and this produces about, isn't it, Mr. Manager, about half of the town's revenue? Another tax that's paid to this municipality is on food and clothing, the sales tax. So we're already taxing all three necessities of life: food, clothing, and shelter. So I simply urge you to give favorable consideration to something that's not a necessity, that's an optional luxury, and which my research shows is largely untaxed in this country. And it's a modest tax on certain and select entertainment events. I come to you with this idea as a result of once having paid this tax myself. I happen to be attending a Carolina football game in a large metropolitan eastern city several years ago, and the cost of admission on the ticket it said $14. And then it said, in addition to that, $1 municipal tax, just as proposed in the town manager's memo to you. Total price, $15. I paid that tax in a city 600 miles from here. In doing that, I believe I added modestly and reasonably to the revenue of that city. Though I was a non-resident there, I didn't know when I went on this trip that I would be paying that tax. I didn't mind. I don't think that it discouraged me or other people in any way from going to attend this entertainment event there at all. I don't believe it hurt tourism. My $1 payment may have proportionally helped pay some of the municipal services in that city as a result of my having been there. But the most important thing of all that I felt about paying that tax was that this was a legitimate, an outright way for the city to raise money for all of its municipal expenses, and not just reimbursement for added expenses, as the manager's memo to you has suggested. So I honestly believe that an entertainment tax, completely aside from the idea of reimbursing the Town or the County, is a very reasonable, a logical, and a foresighted levy that you should request. And I believe that the fact that such a tax is not now on the local ordinances in this state is no reason at all why you should not follow the dictates of fairness and common sense in revenue raising and seek authorization for this. Secondly, I'd like to speak to the merits of this tax itself. I've already spoken a good deal to this idea, but its merit is that it is practically a painless tax, and you don't hardly find nothing like that nowadays anywhere. But it's more painless because it's paid only by users, persons who are voluntarily willing to pay it because they've already made an individual decision to attend an entertainment event. Do you have any other tax like that in the existing levies on the necessities of life? And for instance, in the tax that you are considering tonight on land transfers, which would further tax human shelter, a necessity of life? Certainly, the entertainment tax is the opposite of another proposal that's before you, which would literally tax the necessity of life: the roof over the head of visitors and travelers coming to Chapel Hill. A hotel motel tax. To put a tax on the roof over the head of people who must stay somewhere for the night, who must buy their place of lodging for the night. So the further merits of this, it seems to me, are that the proposed entertainment tax would in no way harm the attractiveness of cultural events here. That this proposal specifically exempts entertainments that are held in places seating less than 15,000 persons, and it would obviously then specifically apply only to Kenan Stadium and the Dean Dome, and specifically to events for which admission is charged, and which are, as a matter of fact, Carolina basketball and football games, to which admission is already on a seller's market. People are anxious to buy all the tickets they can to Carolina basketball and football games. The University's Athletic Association has for many years offered season tickets and some single-game tickets to staff and faculty members, educational foundation, and to a lesser extent, to the general public. We haven't known in advance the cost of these tickets. The university has, as it felt necessary, raised the price from one year to the next a dollar a ticket. There's been no complaint about this. People have been very glad to be able to buy these tickets. And I speak for myself. I've been buying these tickets with appreciation, glad to do it, for more than 50 years. Carolina basketball and football games have simply been sellouts in this town for many years now. Home football game ticket gross sales each year are in excess of $1.5 million. And that is an untapped legitimate source of revenue, which could be of considerable help to municipal government as a levy on a luxury, an optional expenditure on the part of people who are attending these events. As for the other events covered, a typical one is the Genesis concerts. They were attended by more than 35,000 persons last Sunday and Monday nights, and for which the revenue, I would conservatively estimate, is in excess of $600,000 for those two nights alone. I'm not bringing into issue at all the cost to the town involved in the fact that these events were held here, but I'm simply suggesting that at $1 a ticket, the approximately 6 percent tax that would be imposed on a $17.50 ticket, that $1 tax would bring in $35,000 on the basis proposed here to the Town of Chapel Hill in two days, and it would be a fair levy, absolutely fair levy, on a luxury. And finally, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd like to speak to the politics of this matter. I suggest to you that but for the opposition of university authorities, this tax would already have been enacted by authorization of the General Assembly, as you would have been permitted to do this already. I've talked myself with appropriate university authorities and been told by them that they oppose any tax that would raise the price of tickets. And you know, I can't fault them for that. If I had a choice of paying more or less for a ticket, I believe I'd rather pay less. But raising revenue is not an option for you. And the entertainment tax is one of the fairest ways for such revenue as it can reasonably afford the Town of Chapel Hill. This is not, ladies and gentlemen, a pro-university or an anti-university matter in any way. I yield no quarter to anybody in this room, to anyone in this community, as a partisan of our first state university. Our community and this municipality exist for and because of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, which I dearly love, and I believe you do also. I gladly put my money where my mouth is in voluntary gifts for the enhancement and the further development of Alma Mater. But because of the fact that our university does at this time oppose this idea, there is a question that faces you, a practical concern as to how you can gain the necessary authorization for this from the General Assembly. The university is a powerful force with the General Assembly. That body has a plurality of alumni from the University at Chapel Hill. I'm very proud of that, too. It's been very beneficial to our university, and I hope it will so continue. This university also has a very effective, full-time professional lobbyist in the General Assembly at this time. He's a highly respected and a very competent person. University administrators are also highly respected and competent persons, and they have great influence, understandably, with our General Assembly. But my point is, I would say to you that the university is not infallible in its stand on this issue, nor is its position necessarily justified. On the other hand, I am very pleased with the progress of this idea in recent years as well. You have voluntarily decided to formally consider this matter for the first time. The North Carolina League of Municipalities is now considering support of this and other alternates to property taxes as local revenue sources. And finally, the evolving facts of day-to-day life in this community also speak to the merits of this tax more than ever today and tonight. And you could have, you could have on Monday night stepped outside the door here, you could have almost heard the tax-free chords of Genesis at its concert in the Dean Dome. So in conclusion, I'd like to ask you to consider this thesis, consider these two points. Number one, do you believe that an entertainment tax is a reasonable theory as a legitimate idea for Chapel Hill? And number two, if you do, and if the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill continues to oppose this, are you willing to be a hostage to its opposition, and for how long? Or would you be willing to make a start now towards something you believe in, a tax that you feel is fair, timely, and a real opportunity uniquely for Chapel Hill? So on that basis, I suggest that rather than witness and accept passively the university's opposition at this time, I wish instead that it would move with the town as a good corporate citizen in favor of this tax. And I say this because I honestly believe, I honestly believe it won't cost the university one cent in revenue. It wouldn't harm it in any way, because arguments against this, arguments that are conjured against this proposal are pure fancy and not based on logic. And I further believe they are not based on fairness and taxation principles. Our university felt recently, ladies and gentlemen, that it couldn't help the town pay for the widening of the bypass highway. Quite possibly, the university had no option in this matter, and it simply could not make such a gift, perhaps even if it wanted to. But through a bond issue that all of us as citizens of the Town of Chapel Hill passed last fall, this town will be paying back our $800,000 for widening that bypass for the next 20 years. The university, from its budget, will not be paying anything, and it doesn't have to. But it is contributing significantly to the need for that expensive and necessary bypass widening project by sponsoring the football and the basketball games and the concerts, such as the one that clogged many of the local streets here on Sunday and Monday night, and on previous occasions as well. But finally, I believe that you and I, that we as citizens of this town, citizens of this university community, want to move forward together. I've been speaking to the real politics, what I believe to be the realistic politics of this issue. And I hope that if we can't move forward with the administration on this, I hope that you, the council, will make the first step for Chapel Hill as an independent municipality and not a sort of company town. And I hope you'll do this rather than continue to be, or be at any time, a prisoner of what many of us believe is the whim not based in logic and fact of our honorable university. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Be glad to answer any questions or challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Giddes. Thank you for your remarks. Next person, please come forward and identify himself.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Granger Barrett. I'm here tonight in my role as Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce for Public and Governmental Affairs, and I am presenting a statement of a working group and task force of the Chamber of Commerce on the real estate tax, and my comments will be addressed to the proposed real estate transfer tax. I will try to be brief and refer you to the written statements which we have distributed. If you look at the statement, you'll see that we have real reservations and concerns about how a real estate transfer tax will work, what its consequences will be, and whether we have the information sufficient to tell us what the consequences will be and what the consequences of alternatives would be, and how we can measure them. We would ask you to withdraw the proposal right now for greater scrutiny, and resubmit it at a later time to the public for a forum or public hearing. As a chamber, we'd like to emphasize that we applaud the goals of raising funds for the capital infrastructure needs of the town and for open space acquisition. As a chamber, we have endorsed and approved and been in support of the manager and council's capital improvements program, which does provide a mechanism for annually funding and acquiring open space in the town, and for improvements to the infrastructure needs that we have in this community. As a chamber, we supported vigorously and worked hard for the recent bond issues, which provide $2.5 million for open space acquisition and for a large park in the southern part of town, and also a similar amount for improving and adding to our streets in this town. We also, as a chamber, endorsed the Resource Conservation District ordinance, which has the effect of preserving open space areas throughout our town. And of course, there are other mechanisms in our land use regulations for providing open space and recreation space as part of development proposals. Our greatest concern with the proposed tax is that we perceive it and view it to be unfair in its application. It is levied on the sale of property, and it is essentially a tax on the same property tax base which the town taxes through the property tax and which supports about half of the town's budget. It does not fall evenly across the property tax base, however, it just falls on those people who may buy or sell property in a particular year. The effect of this is that certain people pay for the tax, and the benefit is distributed unevenly. A person that has a house that's 30 years old and sells the house pays the tax, but a person who has a new house and continues to live in it and does not sell it, does not pay the tax, and therefore contribute to the same amenities and improvements for which the tax is proposed. A person that sells property in this year supports improved infrastructure in our town, would support a tax to provide additional open space. Those things will benefit the citizens and residents and people that are in the Town of Chapel Hill visiting us for a period of 20, or 30, or 40 years, but would be paid for by people buying, excuse me, selling property in a particular year. We think that the tax falls disproportionately on a particular segment of a tax base which is already the primary funding source for the town's budget, the out-of-labor tax and property tax owners. And so we think that it is more equitable to distribute the burden more widely, since the benefit will be provided more widely. Please note, too, that there is a suggestion in the manager's memorandum that perhaps this tax is related to development. An impact fee is related to development, but this tax is not really related to development or to the creation of needs for governmental services through the development process. Again, Kathy, and my house on Bradley Road is 30 years old. It's been sold many times since 1954. And if I were to sell, we were to sell it this year or next year, there is a strong difference on the effect of development between us selling our house and somebody buying raw land, subdividing it, and creating new residential lots in town. Another point that we would like to make is that as a matter of public fiscal policy, it may be that we should consider issuing bonds to pay for these sorts of improvements and these amenities, and at least study what the resulting necessary increase in the property tax rate would be. That is a fairer approach and a sounder approach, we think, than a real estate transfer tax. It has the effect of distributing the benefit and the burden more widely and more fairly. It distributes it horizontally in the sense that it does not single out a particular category of property owners, those who sell in a particular year, but all property owners through the property tax base. It is more equitable in a temporal sense, in a time sense, because bonds, as they are repaid over 20, 30 years, are paid for by taxpayers over that 20- or 30-year period, and therefore more fairly by all those people over that period of time that would enjoy improved roads or improved parks or open space in our town. Finally, we think there are still a number of questions about implementation of the tax that we should perhaps have some information about before we really dig into the proposal in a public forum or a public hearing. That would include questions such as how the funds would be allocated between the county and the town, the county of Orange and the Town of Chapel Hill. Do we have any forecast of how much a 1 percent tax would generate? And by the way, let me point out that that's 10 times the state's tax on the transfer of real estate. If we get a forecast of that amount that we think the tax would generate, is that amount sufficient for the needs that we contemplate it will be used for? Or is it excessive? What would happen if the economy cooled off and there was a severe decline in the rate of sales? Would we have depended on these funds and then be sort of feeling withdrawal as that source of funds was severely reduced? Will these proceeds from the tax, if it is enacted, if we get the authority and it is enacted, would the proceeds be earmarked? Or would they be discretionary in that they could be used equally well for operational purposes as well as capital needs? The discussion that we've heard suggests that the tax could be contemplated to be used for the open space and infrastructure needs that I have referred to, but there's nothing that we've seen that would require application of the proceeds for those purposes. Finally, we would think that it would be helpful to compare the adoption of a real estate transfer tax to the mechanism of issuing bonds to pay for these improvements or acquisition needs, and what that would have as an effect on the property tax rate. Again, we support, and have supported over time, the objectives for which the proceeds may be used as a chamber, as our membership. We do think this idea needs further studying, and that informed public comment would be furthered by having some more information. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next person, please.
Thank you. I pity anybody that's trying to buy any 35-millimeter film tonight. I think they might have used it all up. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Nick Tennyson, President of the Home Builders Association of Chapel Hill in Durham. Our organization is made up of over 500 member firms who are either builders of residential property or in related trades or businesses. Naturally, an issue that affects real estate as directly as the proposed transfer taxes of vital interest to our members. This issue is one that is being brought up throughout the state as local governments wrestle with the issue of funding the programs that are desired by the citizens of the various communities. While we sympathize with the problem that faces Chapel Hill and all the other cities and counties across the state, we believe that some answers to that problem are simply wrong answers. The transfer tax is a specific solution to a specific problem faced by counties like Dare and Currituck, who face absentee ownership with extremely limited opportunities to raise revenue. The transfer tax is not a general solution. To demonstrate the current dollar impact on a project, I've calculated the effect of the 1 percent tax on a single-family home project built on 40 acres of ground with a raw land price of $30,000 an acre. At a density of two houses per acre, a lot could be expected to sell for $30,000, and a final house sales price of $150,000 would be conservative. While these numbers are not precise, they are realistic and will provide a basis for calculation. The tax on the original sale of the land would be $12,000, which in this seller's market would add $150 to the cost of developing every lot. Another $300 would be paid and passed through by the seller of the lot when sold to a builder. The transfer tax on the house and lot to the eventual owner would be $1,500. A non-deductible total tax of $1,950 of increased cost for the citizen who has the misfortune to buy a new home in a county with a transfer tax. to buy a new home in a county with a transfer tax. It's occurred to me that the ideal time to talk about green space requirements is February. There are no leaves on the trees, everyone's tired of looking through the woods at the neighbor's house, and the trees that have been planted around the new commercial developments look particularly spindly and forlorn. Later in the spring, green space will be all around us. Five years from now, 10 years from now, those spindly trees will have begun to act as the beautiful buffer the newly enacted development ordinance is contemplating. Let's use that same longer-range view to think about the effect on the constituency for whom I'm speaking. Buyers and sellers of houses that will be built. The transfer tax translates into an immediate inflation of prices for all residential and commercial property. Those who sell a home in one part of town and move to another part pay an incredible tax without changing the community's service demand at all. Those who feel that their home is an investment that they may cash in when they need to pay medical or educational expenses could find that the tax that was added in when they bought must be paid when they sell, except that the market has softened, rates have increased, and that equity is gone. There are more than enough risks for a homeowner to take already without having to bear a possible loss like that. Until very recently, I believed it when I was told inflation would always be at least 10%. Mortgages never going to go again below 12, and the 30-year fixed rate is history. Even more recently, I believed the transfer taxes were inevitable. No more. Transfer taxes are no more inevitable than the other three. The task before us is not to find the easiest source of revenue, it's to find the best, the fairest, the one most reflective of benefits derived. We are social animals, we live in communities for the positive effects on our lives of association with others. Let's not create another penalty for choosing to live in one place rather than another. If there are costs to be borne, let's bear them equally, not try to concentrate the load on one portion of the community. Please consider the long-term, potentially disastrous effect of adding one more incremental lump-sum cost to our already heavy housing cost burden. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Question?
I'd just like to ask a question, Mr. Tennyson. Are you from Durham County?
Yes. I live in Durham County.
And you know that the Durham County Commissioners are contemplating real estate transfer tax also.
And we, I can guarantee you that our feelings do not change as we cross the county line.
What is your opinion about their effort to make it more of a luxury tax by exempting homes of 75,000 or 100,000, for example?
I think that part of the theory behind this tax, from my perspective, is that somehow the act of moving into a community is a negative act for that community, that somehow we want to deter the purchase of property in our communities. By raising the cost, by artificially inflating the price of housing without adding value, merely adding a lump sum that's going to be paid every time somebody moves into the community, we're implying that that's a negative event.
But one thing they're considering doing is exempting houses under a certain amount, and I just wanted to know what your opinion was about that.
And my opinion is that it does not matter, that the theory behind that transfer tax is that somehow that's an event to be deterred. Anybody's purchase of a house is not a positive event, and I don't agree with that.
You're aware, of course, we're looking at a range, and 1% is the highest possible amount, and of course, 1/10 of 1% would be $100 on a $100,000 house.
I'm also aware, unfortunately, that most of the times when I see things enacted by government with a maximum range, it goes to the maximum. But I certainly wouldn't imply that that was your plan. Thank you.
We are to infer that, I take it.
Thank you, sir.
Next person.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members, for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Jim Neal, I'm president of the Chapel Hill Board of Realtors, and I will be brief. The Chapel Hill Board of Realtors is in favor of maintaining the quality of life that is facilitated by the acquisition of open space and increasing the infrastructure that we have made available to us through living in this community. We have supported the acquisition in the past with the bond issue this last fall for the park space and the other capital expenditures, the open spaces, the open space requirements of the Chapel Hill Development Ordinance, and the Greenway Plan, all of those have contributed to the quality of life in our community, and we're aware of that in marketing the properties in our community. However, the Chapel Hill Board of Realtors opposes the transfer tax due to the tax burden that it imposes on the homeowner in our community when they try or need to sell their home. To give you an example, I went back to our statistical data from our online computer system here in Chapel Hill. In 1986, the Chapel Hill Board of Realtors saw 924 properties sold through that process, our MLS system. The average cost of a home in our community through the MLS system was $98,264. 1% of that, which is the proposed transfer tax, at the lowest tax rate in the county, which would be outside of Chapel Hill's jurisdiction, would mean that the transfer tax alone added an increase in tax in the year of sale, in addition to the real estate tax, that would total 148% increase, which alarms me considerably. The highest tax rate in Carrboro, for the same average-price home, 1% transfer tax, would mean a 62% increase. Given that the average property in Chapel Hill sells in five to six years, we're looking at a substantial increase in the taxes that our property owners are going to pay. Thus, the proposed tax hits families when they're in current expense of moving, selling their homes, and buying new homes. It would seem far more equitable to look at a bond issue, as been suggested by other speakers prior to me. I, as a representative, feel that that is an appropriate course of action, to see that that burden is spread out over the generations that will benefit in our Greenway Plan and the infrastructure that we put in place, and not go with the transfer tax. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next person, please.
I'm Tom Hefner, I'm president of the North Carolina Association of Realtors, and also a resident of Chapel Hill. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and I commend the Chapel Hill Town Council in having this public forum on the transfer tax issue and the other alternate sources of revenue. Having met this issue on a statewide basis, I can tell you that not all municipalities and counties have been as open in their desire for input from people in the various affected industries, and I do appreciate that. The North Carolina Association of Realtors is opposed to real estate transfer taxes in any form. We feel that the real estate transfer tax is discriminatory in that it affects only a very small segment of the population, that is, the segment of the population that buys and sells real estate. A large proportion of the tax burden will fall on lower-priced properties, since these properties historically are the ones that transfer more frequently. A real estate transfer tax economically is unstable. Unfortunately, the real estate market is prone to economic swings. We currently are fortunate in having an upswing in the market. Most of us can remember the times when we weren't as lucky and when we had a downswing in the market. During those times, the revenue from the transfer tax is undependable. Real estate transfer taxes are inequitable in that individuals of unequal financial conditions pay the same rate. Transfer taxes are inefficient in that they negatively impinge on economic activity, as already been mentioned by a number of the other speakers. The real estate transfer tax is unfair. The North Carolina Association of Realtors is vitally concerned with the housing gap in North Carolina, the ability of lower-income people to purchase and own real estate. We feel very, very strongly that transfer taxes widen the housing gap and make it more and more difficult for low-income people, moderate-income people to own real estate in North Carolina. We feel that the transfer tax is definitely anti-housing. We feel that infrastructure, such as roads, water, and sewer, are every citizen's responsibility, and not merely the responsibility of people who happen to be selling a house. As other speakers have mentioned, there's no justifiable reason why someone moving inside a municipality or a county should be forced to pay a transfer tax. They're already living here, they're simply making an in-town move. For that reason, we feel that the transfer tax is unfair. The transfer tax, we're concerned, unduly affects elderly people. Many, many people in North Carolina and in Chapel Hill, too, especially lower-income people who are elderly, their major basis of their financial wealth is contained in their residence. If it becomes necessary for them to sell this piece of property, obviously, the transfer tax has a negative effect from that standpoint. The real estate transfer tax, we believe, discourages homeownership. We think that the transfer tax makes ownership of first-time buyers extremely difficult. In minimum down payment situations, the 1% transfer tax may equate to as much as 20% of a down payment for some first-time home purchasers. Finally, we have a concern that all governmental agencies who make loans, the Federal Housing Administration, Veterans Administration, Fannie Mae, and Freddie Mac have moved toward a cash equivalency appraisal. We're extremely concerned that it may not be possible for appraisers to include the transfer tax in an appraisal, therefore, creating problems with homeownership, especially for first-time purchasers. I would, in conclusion, say to you that the ownership and transfer of real estate is one of the most fundamental rights that we have, and for that reason, the North Carolina Association of Realtors is strongly opposed to any taxation on that right. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Smith?
How many elderly residents do you know who have had to sell their homes in Chapel
I do not know of any elderly residents in Chapel Hill who have had to sell their homes. I know of many who have sold their homes to move to retirement communities and to use the asset that they have in their home for their retirement years.
The reason I asked the question, you mentioned the fact that one of the reasons why you opposed it, because many of the elderly, maybe of low-income residents, had to sell their home and aren't paid bills, and I wondered how many people would expect that.
Well, I think there's a misconception that everyone who lives in Chapel Hill is affluent. I think there are many elderly people who live in Chapel Hill, who have worked hard, who their only significant wealth, if you looked at their balance sheet, the greatest part of their wealth would be contained in the home that they own.
I have not been one who feels like Chapel Hill is wealthy.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson.
My name is Charlie Nottingham, and I'm going to take you from one bit of real estate to talking about another kind of real estate, and that's the hotel motel tax. Actually, I don't even like to refer to it as a hotel motel tax, it's really a room tax. And I'm chairman of the task force on this particular tax, regarding this particular tax. We've got a statement here, a position statement, everybody has a copy, I'm basically just going to read off that. In 1983, the Chamber of Commerce opposed the local room tax bill. Despite resolutions in favor of the local occupancy, option occupancy tax by the Charlotte, Raleigh, Asheville, and Winston-Salem Chambers of Commerce, we opposed the bill, the Chapel Hill proposal, for the following reasons. As an excise tax on accommodations, the room tax is discriminatory since only, basically, 16% of total travel expenditures, this is according to the North Carolina Division of Travel and Tourism, goes towards lodging. If visitors to Chapel Hill receive governmental services, such as police and fire protection, as well as street maintenance, should not the costs be spread out by taxing other travel-related industries, such as restaurants, retail stores, service stations, entertainment, and so forth? Is not the sales and use tax the fairest way to distribute the tax burden on the travel industry? The Chapel Hill bill, unlike every local bill approved by the General Assembly, did not dedicate any, that's zero, much less a major portion of the revenues towards the benefit of the travel-related industry. In every case, the compelling reason for the adoption of local occupancy, option occupancy tax was to enable North Carolina cities to compete, particularly against other cities with room taxes, on a regional and national level in the tourism and convention business, to stimulate economic growth and job creation, to foster capital investment, and to spur local tax revenues without incrementally increasing government services. In essence, room taxes have been adopted to generate more tourism dollars for the community's economy, and therefore, were thereby increasing local government coffers as well. Three, most of Chapel Hill's travel business originates in North Carolina, particularly conference business associated with the university, such as the Institute of Government. Without a room tax, Chapel Hill would have a competitive advantage in that it would or could offer lower travel costs, particularly to those with governmental travel rates, or government travel rates. This argument was particularly crucial in 1983 because Durham and Wake Counties had not sought approval of the local option occupancy tax. In addition to the sales and use tax paid by visitors, the town of Chapel Hill benefits from the ad valorem property taxes paid by hotels and motels, except for the university-owned facilities. Since property values, especially for non-residential uses, are higher than most comparable-sized cities or communities, hotels and motels are contributing a fair share of the town's general fund revenues. Moreover, the town's financial strength did not represent a compelling need for additional tax sources. Basically, the town has, or does oppose, the room tax proposal. However, this is not a knee-jerk reaction to this tax proposal, they have supported other proposals in the past. As in the 1987 proposal, the chamber believes that the four previously mentioned points are still valid today. The only argument that has been weakened is the one relating to competitive advantage. While it is true that both Durham and Raleigh have approved room taxes, it is also true that both cities are using the revenues to advance their tourism industry, particularly their convention business. Although room tax in Chapel Hill would not put our hotels at a disadvantage in terms of travel costs, it will not help us to be competitive, especially in view of the tremendous growth in hotels in the Triangle area. In addition, the chamber has some additional concerns related to the 1987 room tax proposal. First of all, will it extend to all facilities with rates for periods of less than 90 days as proposed in the 1983 proposal? If the town's intent is to help defray the costs created by transient visitors, the town should be, the tax should be levied on all tourist homes, bed and breakfast establishments, guest houses, including apartments and boarding houses, which have become increasingly involved in the lodging business, summer housing, particularly dormitories such as Granville Towers, and special housing establishments, such as the Institute of Government and North Carolina Hospital's hotel units, both state-owned facilities. To exempt those enterprises would be unfair restraint of trade on the hotel motel industry. If the town is interested in the equitable distribution of the tax burden, can it, in good conscience, exempt those facilities which provide competition to the town's tax-paying corporate citizens? Secondly, should the cost of entranceway and other beautification projects, or additional police, fire protection, or additional street maintenance be borne by levy on hotel motel users? Generally speaking, accommodations is a necessity, not a luxury. If we were a resort area, it would make more sense to use a room tax for such uses. Since the community's values are reflected in its public spaces, the town should be more responsible for its attractiveness. In conclusion, no one associated with this area's travel-related industry, none of the hotels, nor the chamber, nor the university, supports this proposal in any way, shape, or form. We strongly believe that travel-related expenditures are cost-effective in terms of governmental services and tax revenues. It's one of the few industries that meets nearly all of our community's goals and objectives. If we do anything, we should encourage more travel to our area. Finally, the idea of the room tax is contrary to the very pride we have in our community. If we view Chapel Hill as the southern part of heaven, should we charge people for visiting our area?
Mr. Nottingham?
Mr. Nottingham, you're chairman of the chamber's task force on the room tax. Are you yourself a motel hotel owner?
Yes.
I also am a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I don't doubt that your view reflects the leadership of the chamber, but do you poll your members before stating your position?
We did not have a chance to have the board get together and discuss this, but we did put together this task force, and I was the chairman of it, yes.
Mr. Winer?
Mr. Nottingham, in terms of the competitive nature of this tax, what's the relative, approximately relative hotel room rate in Chapel Hill versus that in Durham, which would presumably be on your competitor?
I would say our average rate here is between $45 and $50, which is probably a few dollars higher than it is in Durham.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Nottingham. One else who wants to speak, please come forward, Colonel. Welcome, haven't seen you in a long time.
I haven't been here a long time. In fact, I only recognize four people who were present at the time that the problems I'm going to talk about tonight were brought up. And this was the meetings of the board when they considered the request to construct the Dean Dome a number of years ago. My name's Wesley Egan, I'm sorry. I'm a resident of the Mason Farm Road area, an endangered community adjacent to the Dean I'm approximately 600 feet from it. I also have season tickets for the basketball games. We are now seeing the results of the actions we took a number of years ago, in which we brought up concerns about what would happen to our area in parking, litter, crime, destruction of property, and noise. At that time, we were assured that they would not happen. Like most promises made to be broken, they have happened. We feel that somebody who creates a situation should be responsible for alleviating the problem they create. We also believe that the revenue that you get from such a project should be used to alleviate the problems. We support a tax if it will be used to assist us. No, I'm not, I like to think of the university, and the way I say it is, we put all these things up before, and the alligator who promised everything is beginning to stir in the mud. We need to have increased police protection in the Mason Farm area on 15501, Mason Farm, Odie's Road, those areas, not just on the streets, but on the properties, because we have many people walking through our properties. We need protection from them. Some of them are destructive, they like mailboxes, they create litter, we have the greatest collection of Hardee's, McDonald's, Burger King, and other publications along our street. The Dean Dome itself creates a noise, which we knew at the time, and was assured, we were assured, that this would not happen. The university, and those who contract with the university... The university and those who contract with the university should bear the cost of alleviating the problems they create. Whether it be those of us who attend a function at the Dean Dome, or people from out of town who attend the function, regardless who they are, they should be prepared to bear that cost. Secondly, we believe that if a tax is levied, that part of the revenue, we're not asking at all the monies, but part of the revenue be directed to increased police protection, cleanup, control of parking, and other problems that exist in this neighborhood because of its proximity to the Dean Dome. We're not saying remove the Dean Dome, as I mentioned, we all go to it. But I do feel that a tax or some charge levied on the university should be used to alleviate our problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Egan. Thank you, sir. Next person who wishes to speak on any of these tax proposals? No one? Well, we then go to questions by members of the council, if any, among themselves are directed to you. I seem to hear none, yes?
I just had a comment.
Nancy and Julie, yes.
I just had several calls today about concern for trash near the Smiths, the Student Activity Center, and several people expressing support for a tax if it would mean increased parking, control, cleanup, and police protection. What I did is I invited those people who could not come, those meeting tonight, to write us a letter, and I understand that we can consider that. Is that correct?
Sure.
Any letters that we receive?
Nancy?
I just wanted to ask the manager a question of clarification. In his memo, he said that this is in reference to the land transfer tax, that the tax would be purchase price for land and both new and older buildings and improvements. Improvements to buildings, in other words, if you come in to get a building permit, you would, at that point, pay some sort of a tax?
Yeah, we all have, this discussion only was relating to the transfer of property, whether it was raw land or land with improvements on it.
Oh, oh, that's where, I see what you're saying.
At the time that the property is transferred.
I got you, okay. Okay, now, the other question was, that you would collect this when the deed is recorded, and you believe this tax should be countywide, with half the revenue collected, allocated to the town? So, we would, we, the town of Chapel Hill, would pass a tax that would be countywide? I don't understand that.
No, what we are saying there, we think for it to operate efficiently, that it should be a countywide tax, and if, and if after this hearing tonight, the council is inclined to go forward with this idea, then we should meet with the county commissioners and talk in terms of making this a countywide tax, levied on all property that's transferred in the county, so there won't be any disparity or advantage between Chapel Hill or Carboro, or living just outside the city limits, that it will apply to all property transferred in the county, and then having that property, or that tax collected by the county at the time that the deed is recorded, just as they now collect the deed stamp revenues, and then remit that, a portion of that back to the town. The amount that's remitted to the town or the county certainly should be negotiated between the town and the county, and while I guess I would prefer that it all come back to the town, if the piece of property were in the town, certainly I think that's negotiable, and what we were really talking about here is that if it were a countywide tax, we would think that probably half of the levy on a countywide basis would come back to the town. So, there are many ways that that could be worked out.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dave Godschalk, Art Wern, Bill Thorpe. Colonel Hough?
It seems like we're proposing three large increases in tax here all at once, and I guess when the manager comes back to us with this, I would like to see some quantitative estimates of need attached to some of these things. I'm not convinced in my own mind that we, that we in fact need to do all three of these taxes, simply because they're possible or because other places have done them. I believe we do have some very pressing needs, and the one that is foremost in a lot of people's minds, I believe, is for transportation, street construction, particularly given the state shortfalls in these areas. But I would like to see, in addition to the possibility for doing the taxes, I'd like to see us have some estimate of needs and applications.
A couple of points. One, in addition to that, I'd like to see an estimate of the amount we would expect each one of these taxes would bring in. Secondly, a couple of specific questions. First, Lynn, your response to Nancy's question. Are you suggesting that our decision on the real estate transfer tax be dependent upon the county's decision on that?
No, I'm not saying that your decision should, should be dependent upon that. What I am saying is that I believe it would be better received and could be implemented fairer if it were a countywide levy and administered by the county, since they operate the, the land transfer system in the county.
But you're not suggesting it would be precluded if the county does not?
I'm not suggesting, that's correct, I'm not suggesting that it would be precluded, it could go either way.
Okay, one, one last question. One of the people who testified was concerned that the property transfer tax could increase the potential down payment on a home by an amount quoted as maybe 20 percent. Presumably, the tax could be on the seller, not the buyer. Is that right?
The intent is that the tax would be on the seller, but it may be like other items that, in real estate business, that are on the seller, but the purchaser pays.
Right, but it would not, that would not necessarily push the down payment up 20 percent, it would probably push it up 1 percent in that case, or whatever the tax rate is.
Yeah, not, not necessarily.
Okay. Phil?
You said there can't be laws for what's going to happen out there in the market in terms of real estate. Let me just say that at our retreat, we directed managers to look at this, and certainly we have problems over there at the Dean Dome with people walking through people's yards late at night, everybody don't go to the game, or at least everybody don't have tickets that lives in that area. And so, we saw that as a problem, and I think this is a good way, we're going to refer this back to the manager, but I think this is a good way to get the university's attention in terms of that we, if we don't go along with putting the price on the tickets, that at least we can get in and sit down and let them know some of our problems that we have with people. I've had many calls with people talking about the type of action people are having after the game in the neighborhoods. Now, the land transition tax, that is terrible. Let me tell you why, that, I just bought my partner out of a deal in six months, and so, we have that. I know one would want to sit here and get personal, but you, you've got to realize that the person that owned the property is already going to pay taxes on it in the first place, and going to pay taxes on it as long as he, or she has that property, and I just feel very strongly against that, because we don't know what happened, and we say that the buyer, or the seller, might do that. Well, in this closing, unless we have, the county, or the town council is going to pay the lawyer for each case to represent, in that negotiation, we don't know what's going to happen there, and I just feel that we should just get away from that, because the taxes are already being paid by the, the person that owned the property. The hotel motel tax, and I'll just speak, is, we like to think of it as a luxury tax, but you have to have a place to sleep if you're going to come to Chapel Hill. And thinking about this data, I think a much more fair tax would be for us to ask the General Assembly to give us authority, and I know that you're going to laugh and to say this, to give us, to set up tolls where everybody, everybody, regardless of who they are, coming to Chapel Hill would pay, and that will certainly be a way then for us to fund some money back, and that's what I would like to see, that can be fair across the board. When you get to that toll, if you've ever been to New Jersey or Washington, and everybody, and that's, that would be fair, but to single out those people would not be, and I know that we're not going to get that.
Yes, John Hough?
Bill may offer that as a facetious remark, but the state does face a shortfall in how it's going to build its roads, and toll roads are one of the options it's looking at. So, it, it may be something we'll have to face. Just a couple of comments. One, I think in referring these things back, I think we need to pay careful attention to how these funds would be used were we to get the opportunity to spend them. I think we owe, obviously, the people of the community and the people who would come to the community, a very fair shot at, at how these, how these funds are to be spent, which is another way of stating Dave Godschalk's need question. My guess would be, we obviously, we don't need them all, but there are certain specific things that can be accomplished with each one that can be earmarked to them, and I think that we ought to give careful attention to that, Mr. Manager, in preparing the response. Secondly, with respect to the, to the land transfer tax, I found in all the comments made tonight, Tom Heffner's remark about the regressivity of the land transfer tax, the most compelling argument that was made. It led me to think that maybe we ought to renew our interest in impact fees if what we're really interested in doing is causing newcomers to pay for the cost of development. That if that's, if that's our real objective, that the impact fee may be a satisfactory substitute for the land transfer tax. And finally, with respect to the admissions tax, I think the argument for that is still the most compelling to be made, and I have to say that I'm very disappointed that the university chose to make its position known by means of letter and not stating it publicly. I think they need to hear, as I heard through the day, and I guess other members of the council did too, about the impositions which are caused by nighttime events, which are unusual, which are the new feature in the landscape in Chapel Hill. We've had daytime football games, six or five of them a year, that involved 45,000 or 50,000 people, but they were during the day, they were always on weekends. We had basketball games up until this year that only involved about 10,000 people, not all of them from outside. Now, we have a facility that accepts upwards of 20,000 people from events, most of which are at night, and it is an imposition on the community and on the neighborhood. It's also a benefit, and I go, like everybody else, I have these season tickets that people have described, and I wouldn't trade them for anything. However, I think the argument is very compelling for, for some way of recovering the cost and then spending the money to be sure that it, that these things don't represent an imposition on the community, and that's really what we're talking about here. And I would hope that in the process of further consideration, that the university might be led to the trough of understanding on this matter and, and made to understand that it's causing a problem and that this is one way to solve it. There may be other ways to solve it, and if they have them in mind, I'd be glad to hear them.
Nancy and Julie.
I was going to move, but you borrowed the manager.
Well, all right.
I just have a question.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting that we, we, this might be a possible course of action, but I did want to ask our attorney if there was any legal problem differentiating between university and non-university events held at the, held on campus and generating this possible tax.
I'd like to research that.
Okay, all right, maybe you could do that.
Good idea. Is there a motion that we refer?
I'll move.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor of referring this, these matters to the manager and the attorney, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matters are referred, and that is the conclusion of our public forum on the tax matter, matters. Now, go to petitions. First one is the Oaks Homeowners Association concerning stop signs on Pinehurst Drive and other streets. Where are we, Mr. Petitioner?
Well, I was hoping, I was hoping to see Frank Sinatra's debut on Magnum this evening, so I'm going to be very brief.
This is on channel 13, Terry.
It's not on your, it's not on yours, John. I'm Terry Zug, and I represent the Oaks Homeowners Association, and we have submitted a petition for the additional, a number of additional stop signs in the Oaks. The, this, this is the Old Oaks neighborhood, which is south of the Chapel Hill Country Club. And about two years ago, we became aware that there was a great deal of additional traffic headed our way in. More recently, with the completion of the Pinehurst Drive, which now runs through Oaks Two to the north of the Country Club, we've begun to see a great deal of additional volume of traffic in our neighborhood. We've also had a number of speed checks, one of which by the Chapel Hill Police Department indicates that drivers through our roads, which are quite straight and unimpeded, tend to go at least 10 miles over the speed limit. Most of all, we're concerned about the safety of members of our neighborhood. We have the back nine of a golf course running along three of our streets, and this necessitates a number of small walkways for both golfers and golf carts crossing three of our streets, and they do so at a very slow rate of speed. We also have small children in the area who frequently drive to the country, ride up to the Country Club on their bicycles, and recently, because our road was opened from Pinehurst Drive right on up to Ephesus Church and allows a way to avoid the traffic on 15501, our road has been reclassified from a collector road to what is called a minor arterial. This is a road that, according to the Chapel Hill Design Manual, calls for driveways roughly 500 feet apart and also sidewalks, and we have neither requirement in our neighborhood. We began about a year and a half ago by writing to the town. Richard Gonzalez, who was the president of the Oaks Association at that time, wrote a letter to the town requesting some kind of attention to the problem of increasing traffic in the new roads, and he got back a very polite answer, saying that he would be notified later about what was going to occur. At our meeting in April 18, in 1986, the town, the Oaks Homeowners Association voted to hold a questionnaire to see how the residents of the Oaks felt about having additional stop signs. We did this in October 1986, we took a questionnaire to all of the houses, we have about 80 homeowners in the area, we had 53 who responded, and only two were against the idea of having additional stop signs at the locations I've indicated on the petition. The only other person who deferred was my teenage son, who just got a car, and suggested we remove all stop signs and raise the speed limit to 55. I told Jordy he'd lose his car if we did that. We also took a tour through the area last fall with David Bonk from the Transportation Department, and he was very kind to come over in the evening and recommended that a number of stop signs could be used at some of the locations we've suggested, but he recommended that we come before you. And so, we're presenting this petition, it's signed by around 128 members of our neighborhood, which I think is a very large response. We realize that we are only one of many neighborhoods in Chapel Hill, we don't want to disrupt the flow of traffic, but we think we have a very strong case for having some additional stop signs for the safety of our residents. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions from members of the council? Is there a motion regarding this petition? Move referral?
Second.
All those in favor of referring to the manager and attorney, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Mr. Ron Strauss, Ray Umstead Drive and Umstead Park. Mr. Strauss?
I'm here to make a special offer. You can place your toll road booth right on Umstead Drive, and we'll be very happy. I'm here to talk about safety in Umstead Drive with you, and you've gotten a letter before you on this matter. I'd like to review some of the changes and features of Umstead Drive and Umstead Park, because I think they're pretty unique for Chapel Hill. Umstead Park is situated right in downtown practically Chapel Hill, and is dissected by Umstead Drive. Several changes are occurring currently in that area that you should be aware of. A greenway is being planned for the south side of Bolin Creek, and an alternative intersection for Airport Road is being considered as part of the roadway plan. Furthermore, a set of cluster houses is being considered for, further up on Umstead Drive. Myself and... Myself and 52 other citizens of the adjacent neighborhood have considerable concerns that this will result in an increase in the flow of traffic that's already quite heavy on Umstead Drive, particularly if there's a traffic light at a major intersection with a new bridge placed here at the corner of Umstead and Airport Road. In thinking about this, we became aware that there was a time when Umstead Drive did not proceed through Umstead Park, but rather stopped at the park. And that Umstead Park, which you may be familiar with, has two sides. One side has a ball field and a tennis court and a wooded area, and the other side has a basketball court and a playground in Umstead Center. Indeed, if you've ever played on that ball field, you know that the outfield is very, very short, because someone came along and put a thoroughfare right through the middle of the park. Myself and a number of the residents there are deeply concerned about safety factors related to the placement of Umstead Drive and the increase in traffic thereupon. People drive through here at rapid speeds. Neighbors tell of people that have driven off into the creek. If you live where I live, which is just up the hill here, you can hear the squeals of tires all night long on Umstead Drive. But perhaps more important, and as a parent, I'm real tuned to that, is that all of the children that live in the neighborhoods across Umstead Drive, from this new greenway and from this active recreational area, have to cross that road somewhere. And the place where they cross that road is right near the ball field, where the road is elevated about five feet from where they stand and where the only way that they can see if a car is coming is to get into the road. One of these days, there's going to be a child that's crossing right over here that's not going to make it to the other side. Enough of us have seen things happening there to become really concerned, concerned about the traffic that exists now, and deeply concerned that this will become what it already is, a shortcut to Carboro, a way of getting around Chapel Hill without going on Estes Drive. The road is much too windy, much too narrow, to accommodate that. Our proposal, we've got two of them. One may be more dramatic than the other. One of the proposals is that you turn the clock back a little bit, unite Umstead Park, make it into one continuous park, that you make the road, Umstead Drive, a local feeder road that dead-ends in a parking lot at the park, that you make the other part of Umstead Drive that comes off of Estes Drive a dead-end road with a parking lot at the end, that you unite the park into one. Think of some advantages of that. For one, you would not need a new intersection at Airport Road. You would not need a new major bridge across Umstead Drive. It wouldn't bear that kind of traffic. You'd be improving the closest thing to a central park that Chapel Hill has, and you'd be effectively dealing with the safety issue. It's a low-cost solution to what I consider to be an emerging problem for a relatively large section of the community. So I would urge you to consider the precious town resource that the park and the greenway space there, adjacent to it, is. This park really serves a broad spectrum of the people in this community. I didn't spend a whole lot of time. Myself and some neighbors went around talking about this, and we got over 50 people who have expressed their concern regarding traffic safety there, a fair number of whom have specifically endorsed the idea of closing the road through the park. I don't know who to give this to. Mayor?
Town Manager. Any questions to Mr. Strauss? RD, John?
First of all, it's not a question. I haven't been on council when that road was open. And it's agreement between the town and the developers of those apartments that that road be open. And I think there's a change of property in connection with the opening of that road. So it could be an unfair for the town now to go back on its word for those people who developed it for the property in order to open it. I think Mr. Umstead, we've swapped the man from the town in connection with that opening. Secondly, there's been a lot of talk about straightening the road out, putting the whole park on the left-hand side of Umstead Drive coming from Airport Road by going, starting back and straightening the road out by the ball field. That was one of the things that we talked about a lot. And all of a sudden, the idea dropped. Maybe that idea can resurface, and something could be done as far as putting the whole park on one side rather than the other.
Yeah, I would urge you to consider mechanisms to slow that traffic on Umstead Drive if you're not going to close the road. I realize there's some drama associated with closing the road. But maybe stop signs at each of the intersections or a crosswalk with a light or an overpass or an underpass. All those things would be ways of connecting that park and making it a safe access.
I just wanted to commend the neighbors for this initiative. I think it is a serious problem, and it's good to have neighbors, in effect, generate this kind of a solution to what is obviously a problem that's going to grow and become more intense. I would think that in considering the options, I think the manager ought to consider the full range of options, including closing that road. We can have public hearing, and Mr. Umstead and the others can come forward and indicate their concerns about the matter and seems to me take those things into account. But it may well be that the radical solution is the best one. I'd like to move referral.
Thank you, sir. Andrew Second. All in favor of referring the matter to the manager and attorney, say aye. Opposed? Carrie, thank you, sir. All the other petitions this evening. Do you have a question?
Yes, I have a comment or petition, yes. All right, after five.
Do you have a petition, Mr. Manager?
Very briefly, please. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to draw to your attention that I've left a letter with you regarding the first item on the consent agenda. On behalf of Mr. Harder, the owner of the Form 1 building, with a suggestion, I would like to ask you all to consider it. It may well be that by the time you get to this late tonight, I will not be here. I'm driving to Wilson County Courthouse early in the morning. Just do ask for the courtesy of you taking a look at the letter when you get to it. Thank you.
I have two comments to make. First, I would like to state my appreciation, and I probably speak for the whole council, for Dave Gotchalk's work that he has put in on our behalf and the outstanding job that he did at the hearing on Monday night. And I'm just hoping the county commissioners will look at all the possible solutions to the dilemma that we're in. The second item, I would like to ask whether the council would approve of taking item Agenda Number 10 off the agenda. It's the implementation of the land use plan potential rezonings. And I feel that it's something I'd just like to look at a little bit more carefully. And I asked the town manager before the meeting whether it was possible to consider this March 9th and still have time to advertise in a public hearing. There is time.
As long as it's back on the agenda for the March 9th meeting and that we make some decisions at that time, because the hearing has already been called and is scheduled for the April meeting.
Is there any objection to withdrawing this for tonight? If there being none, we will scratch number 10. All the other petitions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What number 10 is for the benefit of those people?
Yes. A report on proposed areas to be rezoned for conformity with the new land use plan.
Those areas concerned also included is the request from the... Lake Forest Association.
Yes.
To make sure that they understand that that would be referred. It's part of the agenda item.
Is anyone here tonight who are planning to speak on any of these items?
I may be behind, nor nearby.
I see. I was thinking of this particular item, item number 10. Anyone who is here tonight for that? We're planning to postpone it until March 9 at the regular meeting on Monday, March 9. Thank you. All the other petitions?
Mr. Mayor, it's our petition to speak to item number 6 on behalf of the last week for the local council.
You've just done so. Any other persons indicate desire to speak, yes.
I would like to speak to item 6.
What's your name?
John Shigman.
All right. Yes.
Same item, same go ahead.
All right.
Same item, Kate Rashager.
All right.
Same item.
Mark Seal.
Item 11.
I got you in the wrong one. Okay, there was too crowded, yes. Yes?
I'm...
Yes.
Irene Brigham.
Thank you. Yes. Any other?
Item 6, it's Kenny Maney.
All right.
Item 5, my name is Tom Ward.
Excuse me.
Item 5, Larry Benninger.
Item 5, Bob Munch.
How about you, sir?
You have a couple of years.
Michael Burson.
Michael?
Item 7, Mike Bowe. Jack Smire will also be speaking on that item, perhaps.
All right. Well, any others?
Can we limit some time?
When we get to these, I would like to suggest very strongly that we attempt to limit the time. We are not holding a public hearings on these at all. And appreciated that you'd be very brief, and also if you hear something that's said by another that has already been covered, that you might omit it when you get out. Is that agreeable? I hate to set a specific time, but I hope we will move forward expeditiously since we have 15 people lined up for those items. Is that agreeable with the council? We'll see how it goes. Now, sir, this is a petition, all right?
Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I realize that the second item on the agenda did run just a bit over its 20-minute allotment, so I will try to be brief. My name is Scott Gerlock. I'm co-chairman of this year's 11th Annual PiCap 5 Burnout. This is a benefit for the North Carolina J.C. Burn Center. I trust that you've all received a written proposal petitioning you for a special noise permit for this event. I hope you've had a chance to look over it a bit. In it, we attempt to address some of the problems which have been voiced both by this council in the past as well as the police department. A little later on, I'd like to give time for some questions and perhaps some discussion. Right now, I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Peterson, who is the director of the J.C. Burn Center, to speak on behalf of the benefactor of this event. Dr. Peterson?
My name is H.D. Peterson, and anyone that thinks I'm going to ask you not to do this is mistaken. These fellows work very hard. They make some noise in an area where it probably isn't too bad a problem. We live fairly close to it. We've had a parking problem, but we haven't heard about them. They last year gave us $5,400, which goes to a charity that is unique from most charities in that every penny of it goes to the people of North Carolina. It's either patient care items, education, or research. It's an important contribution. It's a very simple matter. If you don't allow them to have it, it costs me probably $6,000 this year, which I won't be able to use on the patients. If you do allow them to have it, they'll have a good time, and the J.C. Burn Center and the people of North Carolina will benefit to the tune of $6,000 or $7,000, which we need very much. Because, as you know, burns are a disease of poverty. All these people have problems, and all the help we can give them is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson. This time, if I could, I'd like to ask Johnny Biggers, who's my fellow co-chairman of this event, to come forward and give a brief proposal, oral proposal, to the council. John?
All right, John.
Thank you all. I am Johnny Biggers. I'm the other co-chairman for the burnout this year. We are petitioning the council for a special noise permit on April 10 from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. We do recognize the problems that arise due to burnout, and we feel they're much less severe than any athletic contest or any concert that happens on campus. As far as noise goes, I'm sure that all of you have been in Kenan Stadium. Like was said earlier, 45,000 to 50,000 people there. It's very loud. Our event only happens four hours in the afternoon. It shouldn't conflict with any suppers in the Oaks that may be half a mile away. It shouldn't conflict with any lunches. It happens at 2:00. And to tell you the truth, it should happen while people are during business hours. We don't see really that many people that it affects. We do understand about the traffic, and we've always handled that before successfully. We plan to do that again this year. Even Captain Jorgis of the Chapel Hill Police Department has not necessarily backed us on that, but he has agreed that we can, he thinks we can handle the traffic. We feel also that the real issue of the noise permit is the noise. And we don't, we wish that you wouldn't really consider the other factors involved with the party and mainly consider the noise. Like I said, there's several other events that create more of a traffic hazard, more of a drinking hazard than our event. And it happens many more times a year than just once a year for hours. Like Dr. Peterson said, it's a unique type charity. All our contributions, dollar for dollar, go toward the charity. It doesn't go to anything else. And we are the largest individual contributors to the J.C. Burn Center. I say this individual contributors because we aren't the largest as far as corporations go or our national fraternity. Our individual fraternity is the largest contributor to the J.C. Burn Center. Like Dr. Peterson said, our last year contributions were $5,400 out of a total of $13,000 that we've given them. This went toward the purpose of a hydrotherapy machine. I really don't know how many of you contribute regularly to any charities. But right now, I'd like to ask you for your contribution now to the North Carolina Burn Center in the form of a special noise permit for four hours. So I'd like now to entertain any questions that you might have.
Entertaining.
Yes. I want to commend you for your efforts, first of all. I had a question about what you did last year about the traffic problems on Burning Tree Drive and in the Oaks. What had you decide to do last year?
What we did last year, what we arranged with the police department, was to control parking in those neighborhoods to the extent that we stopped illegal parking, blocking driveways, blocking fire hydrants, that type of thing. One of the problems which we weren't run into is that the citizens living along those streets have asked us to eliminate parking there. Well, our problem is that it's perfectly legal for citizens to park on that road, so we cannot stand at the entrance of the neighborhood and ask people not to park there. In our proposal, we've asked that, in an attempt to eliminate parking, that you declare for those four hours those areas illegal parking zones. So in that, and when you do that, we can stand at the entrances. We can warn people that if they do park there, they will receive a ticket. If they park illegally, they will be towed. In the past, our hands have more or less been tied to eliminating illegal parking.
There was a problem on Burning Tree Drive last year because I was, tried to pass there about 2:00 p.m. and found it very difficult.
Right. We're aware of those problems. And through this proposal this year, we're hoping to eliminate all the parking in those neighborhoods.
Other questions, Mr. Smith?
I would have hoped that at least somebody from the police department would have been here because the same thing came up last year in connection with this burn center, this burnout. And then we could have gotten some idea from the police department as just what the situation was. But secondly, I hope that when it comes back, But secondly, I hope that when it comes back, we'll have comments from the police department. But let me ask just one question. We talk about noise and the problems that noise creates in the neighborhoods. You two gentlemen seemingly are responsible individuals. Now, is there any way that the fraternity or the sponsor of this activity can be responsible enough to somewhat turn the volume down on that system, whoever's playing? You know, that would help a whole lot. You know, just turn the volume down a little bit so that it won't be so loud. And I don't see how you talk to each other.
Yes, sir.
You probably scream at each other, but you don't talk. Because there's no way you can talk to each other if you're right there at the event.
That is very much a possibility, and if it would help you look more favorably upon it, we would definitely consider...
Well, it helped me a whole lot in all the noise on this, you know. I made the statement last time, I wish they'd cut out all of it. But I think, I think, I think the problem is nobody is responsible enough to tell that band, listen, cut this thing down, you're too loud. You know, you can walk off from it a little ways. Go out there at the fifty-four. Just ride out to fifty-four and see what it sounds like, you know? Then you can imagine what the people are feeling, how they feel about it, you know? And if it's loud, because what I plan to do, and I'll tell you right now, I'm gonna sit on my front porch with a tape recorder, and when he's not here starts, I'm gonna record it. And I'm gonna sit here at this table, and I'm gonna play it. So you know, people can understand what I'm going through when they, it's so loud a fact. That's all I ask you to do, is to be responsible enough to tell that band that they don't have to be so darn loud for you to enjoy the activity.
That's one of the advantages that we feel we have being on Finley Road, in that we're not in a residential area per se. We have three other fraternity houses as neighbors. The nearest neighborhood, I would say, would be the Oaks, which is across fifty-four. You know, we would certainly, we would certainly consider turning the volume down, yes, sir.
If I may say something to that also, this is, you know, during business hours, there shouldn't be that many people. I'm sure there are some, I'm not saying there aren't. But in the neighborhood, we also have monitors out on fifty-four and riding through the Oaks neighborhood, and we've had feedback from them about how loud this is. I'd also like to point out that if you stand on probably Franklin Street on a Saturday afternoon during a football game, you can probably hear the roar of the crowd. And I'd just like to say that happens at least six times a year, plus I understand basketball games and concerts are indoors, but the noise is a problem also other places, and it's, this is only a one-time event for four hours a day for a very good cause.
But the roar of the crowd is nothing compared to that guy sitting there mashing on that squealer. You know what I'm talking about, don't you?
Yes, sir.
All right. There's nothing compared with that squealer that makes it even louder, you know?
Yes, sir, I understand that.
Mr. Warner?
Two questions. One, first, you gentlemen, is there a reason that this could not be held in another location, say, on campus where we could perhaps alleviate some of these traffic problems and maybe even some of the noise problems?
Well, we have several reasons. The first one deterring us this year is that the main site that has been suggested has been Airing House Field, and there are events scheduled for that time, which will not, which we have talked to, and they will not move those events. Secondly, we feel that where we are, being on Finley, that it's very advantageous as far as the congestion, both pedestrian and parking traffic. We feel that putting ourselves on Airing House Field, surrounded by the dorms, classrooms, that that would just create tremendous responsibility on ourselves that we don't have at Finley. Third point is that we would like to maintain the connection with our house, with the fraternity house itself. The event is a philanthropic event benefiting the burn center now. It was originated in order to pay back certain fraternities and sororities when our house burned. We feel that connection to our house is very important, both in the respect of pledging, getting our fraternity name around campus, where we are off-campus, which makes it difficult for us sometimes, and also just the significance of the event itself benefiting our house.
I would hope, I don't find any of your reasons all that compelling, and I think it's a worthwhile event, and I would really encourage you to think a little bit more about perhaps holding it in another location so that we might be more comfortable with it.
Could you suggest an alternative place?
Well, I'd like to leave you, Kenan Stadium, you know, there are a number of places, someplace on campus. Think about that. I'd like to ask the manager a question. Last year, how, do we provide additional police for this event?
We, oh, I'm sorry. We provide additional police, but we require them to pay for the additional police.
These are off-duty police.
Off-duty police, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll have a motion to refer.
One to refer? One second. Oh, we could.
You got one statement?
Excuse me?
You have one more statement, okay?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to say that if the event is held on campus, that the traffic problem's still gonna overflow on the Chapel Hill roads, not only, not only UNC roads. And then what I would like to say is that we understand that in normal practice, these are referred to the town manager or deferred, referred to the town manager, what have you. We have talked to both the town manager and Major Gold, and we understand what their feelings are to this, and we really feel there's no reason for any further consultation with them, and I can tell you right now, their feelings are against this. We're hoping to override their feelings by coming to the town council. I understand that's a task, you know?
We're working under a time constraint.
Oh.
We've been dealing with the police station extensively since December in hopes of persuading them. They continually ask us to come back with more and more proposals, and we've done that. However, it's come down to this point where just two weeks ago, we got our final decision from the police station, which was a negative recommendation. Therefore, we're coming before you under a very difficult time restraint.
What's your time constraint?
The...
April tenth?
The event is scheduled for April tenth. Without a noise permit, it's not feasible for us to sign contracts with bands because of rather large deposits, which are required. We can't cancel those contracts without forfeiting a lot of money. Sponsorship of other companies, they're not willing to put their sponsorship forward, not knowing that the event will happen or not.
I think that I have to say to young friends here that in the eleven years that I've sat here, the number of times that the council has acted on a petition the night it was presented can be counted about once. It never happens, and it's not gonna happen tonight, and I'm sorry. But, and it may well be the town's fault, but the town, the council is just simply not in a position, its rules are such that it, that it feels that it has to have completed staff work before it takes action, and we don't have that in front of us, and for that reason, the council would be ill-advised to act tonight. If this causes you inconvenience, we regret it. But frankly, I don't think we have any choice.
That's understandable. May I ask, when will be the decision?
Let me get into that. I would hope that we could have this on the March nine agenda. Mr. Manager, is that agreeable? Now, doesn't, that gives you thirty days.
Yes, sir, it does.
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say to you, there's no problem with us. We can put it back on the ninth agenda. As the two gentlemen said, I think the police have all their information in hand, but under your procedures, we never bring that information to the petition tab. But we have it and have it available, and we'll present it on the ninth.
Mr. Peterson?
Well, I'd like to say that I live in the first house on the Oaks, and I've never been bothered, and I'd like to invite you and the chief of police to come by and see what that money goes for. And then if you can turn it down, you'll be stronger person, I think you are.
All those in favor of referral, say aye. Opposed, carried. Thank you very much.
Help us cause one bit?
Not, I wouldn't say any. We will move now to other petitions, other petitions. The minutes of February second.
Moved and seconded.
Any emendations? All those in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed, it's carried. The minutes of February nine.
Approval.
Moved and seconded. Any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's carried. Item five.
One of the things that I have noticed that, in watching Steve and the guys in Congress, that there were some people who had suggested we wait it until we get our new building, which will be out here somewhere, before going. And this is a good reason that we, that we might want to get the elected voting system when we put that new building in, in terms of the people can actually see. There are students that I talked to today. So under procedure, since this is new, that we know what we're doing up here, and we know how the votes are going, but there are people out there that might not know, so I think that we ought to call for a hand showing on the votes that are taken on minutes so that they can see, because sometimes we go so fast, and particularly if you're on TV.
Well, in the event of a division, you are free, Mr. Thorpe, at any time to call for a hand vote. I'll be delighted to entertain it.
Thank you.
When they're unanimous votes, I don't think it's necessary. Item five, resolution approving Northwood Five preliminary subdivision plat, including town dedication right of way, requirement for underground power line at the fire station, R one A. Planning board recommends adoption. Manager recommends R one B, without the town dedication right of way, and without requirement to have three-phase power line underground. R one C would deny. Is there a motion on any of the resolutions? And we'll start the discussion.
I'll make a motion to put Resolution B on the floor.
Seconded, moved and seconded that we have R one B, which would be the resolution without town dedication of right of way. Discussion is now in order on that motion. Mr. Passqueeny?
I have three questions. One is, the first one's for the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we ought to, but thank you for reminding me of that. It's the overwhelming aspect of TV that makes me forget it all.
Mr. Mayor is getting on with it.
Yes, I want him to look at it. Point it at him. All right. Roger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, this subdivision request came before you on January twelfth, at which time you were next to the property. You considered the subdivision. There were a number of concerns that you raised in our memorandum that's before you. We grouped those into what we heard as four main issues that you were wanting to talk about and concerned about. The first issue being a cul-de-sac in the northwest corner of this property. Second issue being recreation area. Third issue being a power line. And the fourth issue being a stubout that had been recommended. If I could, if I could drop the microphone. If I could go to the map just for a moment to, this is the subdivision that we're talking about in North Carolina eighty-six, Weaver Dairy Road coming in. The cul-de-sac that a number of concerns were expressed about was this cul-de-sac in the northwest corner, and there were concerns about, that were expressed by a number of people and the Parks and Recreation Commission about this open space buffer that was provided along the road. You do have in your packets a revised version that has come to you from the applicant, in which the applicant has removed this cul-de-sac and labeled that three-and-a-half acre area as reserved for future development. The applicant has also revised the plan to remove this fifty-foot strip of open space here and extend these lot lines out to the street, and has suggested that a buffer easement be placed along those lots. We feel that that recommendation is acceptable and addresses some of the concerns that were raised, particularly by the Parks and Recreation Commission, about being sure that all area that is shown as recreation area is acceptable and meets the, meets the suitability requirements of the ordinance. With respect to the power line, we mentioned in our memorandum that we believe that the ordinance does not allow us to require that a three-phase power line be placed underground, and we have included in the Resolution B a statement that the power line, if it is along Weaver Dairy Road, will need to be placed on the south side of Weaver Dairy Road extension there. We have information that indicates that that line may not have to be placed along Weaver Dairy Road at all. That will be something that will be, that will be worked out in the final design plans if this subdivision is approved. However, if, in the event that the power line is along Weaver Dairy Road, we have included a stipulation, say, that it should be on the south side to minimize incursion into the buffer that's provided between this subdivision and the existing Northwood Five neighborhood. And then on the, on the final issue, the issue of a stubout to the Alt Miller property to the east, in response to several comments made when this was before you on January twelfth, we have deleted that, that recommended stipulation in Stipulation B. To summarize, the, you had before you on January twelfth recommendations from the planning board and Parks and Recreation Commission. We now have before you a revised manager's recommendation recommending approval with conditions.
Thank you, Roger. Go ahead.
Roger, where was the location? Could you show us on the map the location of the power line you're talking about that can't be underground?
We had been talking about a power line that would come in off of eighty-six and come along Weaver Dairy Road here. And so if, that's what the, these preliminary plans are showing, and we are, we are suggesting that a condition of the approval be that any power line that is placed along Weaver Dairy Road be placed along the south side of the road rather than the north side of the road. We were concerned that if the power line were placed on the north side of the road, that it would serve to damage this open space and, which serves as a buffer between the existing Northwood neighborhood and this new development. So what we're saying is that if it is to be along Weaver Dairy Road, it should be along the south side.
What does a three-phase line look like? It says it's a three-phase. What, what's the nature of the power line? Is it just a regular power line, or, I mean, is it not gonna have towers, I presume?
No, no, it's not, it's not a tower.
Okay.
When you, when you look at it, it's just the lines on poles. Generally, three-phase means there are three separate wires and plus a ground, and then a ground wire, so there are four separate wires on the pole, not counting the telephone or the cable or others. A single-phase means there's only one, one wire on the pole.
Okay.
And a ground, there's always a ground wire.
You state that the development ordinance doesn't allow us to require to put it underground. Do you think this is something that we ought to consider changing, or since?
Well, the, it's my understanding that the, that the reason we have that provision in the ordinance is that it is extraordinarily expensive to place a three-phase line underground, and in many cases would represent an unreasonably large expenditure to do that. It might be something that, that might be considered, but I really don't, don't have an opinion on that at the moment about whether or not we should change the ordinance.
But the other utilities in this development will be underground?
Yes, yes.
Rodney?
What is the difference? Well, let me ask, is recreation area, is the resource conservation district a part of the recreation, required recreation area? As it comes down, this draw here?
Yes, yes.
Now, what is the difference in elevation, or what will be the difference in elevation, say, from Lot seventy-four and Lot eighty-eight? That is the two lots adjoining the lower cul-de-sac, the lower road.
Let's see.
How deep is that, that conservation district, that draw?
The...
You see what I'm talking about?
I do. I'm trying to read the plan here and trying to pick out that elevation.
Well, it didn't have, it didn't have what's names on it, see?
Yeah, it doesn't.
There, you got five-twenty.
The, the engineer that designed the plan is here. Perhaps he can, he can answer the question off the top of his head. I'm having a hard time finding the elevation.
Well, I am too, especially, and I have a hard time finding it on the map in front of me.
Rodney, you talking about from the corner of Lot seventy-four?
I'm talking about from the, from the, from the corner of lots, from Road eight, that is, well, just take the road. Road A opposite is Lot four, Lot seventy-four, and Lot eighty-eight, which is across the draw from Lot seventy-four. Now, what I wanna know is whether or not it's a deep ravine.
Yeah, it's about eight feet deep. These are two-foot contours, it's about eight feet.
It's about eight feet deep.
Yeah.
Which means that it's not likely that you can use it for anything as far as recreation, passive or any other kind, if it's eight feet deep.
Well, it's over a distance of about a hundred feet, so...
It's broad.
It's gradual, it's not, it's not steep. It's gradual.
Okay.
I'd like to know some more about the power line underground. I, I don't think there's a good place on this project to put an above-ground power line, and I particularly don't like to see it running along that...
and I particularly don't like to see it running along that landscaped parkway with the median there, and between that and this whole new development. I wonder what the cost is to put that underground? Do you have any numbers on that? Everybody says it's expensive, but how expensive is it, and how much would we be willing to pay to try to have a very attractive area?
Well, we certainly share your concern. That was one of the points that was raised in earlier discussions about wanting both to have the power line located in such a way as to not intrude into that buffer on the north, and also concerned about the appearance issue of that landscaped parkway and a power line there. It could be that the applicant might be able to address the cost questions or alternate locations.
I see Allen is here. Allen?
Yeah, that question was raised at the Planning Board meeting, and the answer given was, first, the town manager was correct in stating that the three-phase has three lines, but these are high-voltage lines, opposed to low-voltage lines. And then the recommendation from the manager to the town council indicates that all the low-voltage lines within the development will be underground. This is a high-voltage line, which costs about $100 a foot, put underground, to answer Dave Godshock's question, which means in the range of $50,000 to $70,000 to run it around underground.
Why do we need a three-phase going into that single-family development?
The Duke Power will feed any subdivision with three phases, but you have to understand, as it was explained to us in the Planning Board, the line that comes around on that extension of Weaver Dairy Road is not only for this subdivision, but is a feeder from a substation to another substation. So it is a high-voltage line as opposed to a low voltage line.
Almost sounds like the power company should participate in placing that underground, and it shouldn't just be the applicant or the town. The second question that I wanted to follow up is another question about cost, and that is, the manager's recommendation is that the developer has to acquire the right-of-way from the town. I assume that's along the frontage of the fire station property in order to make the curve in the road to allow for a buffer later on in the property there. I wonder what we're talking about there. I noticed the Planning Board recommended that the town dedicate that small amount of property. Is this a large item, a small item? Is it a matter of principle that we're standing on here, or is it really important that we require the developer to pay us to orient the road the way we would like to have it oriented?
The amount of land that we're talking about is about 9,000 square feet of land. The Planning Board has recommended that the stipulation be that the town dedicate that 9,000 square foot area as right-of-way. The manager's recommendation does not specify how it should be acquired. What it says is that it shall be acquired, and so it can be acquired by the town dedicating it, it can be acquired through purchase, it can be acquired by a land swap. There are any number of ways in which the necessary property could be acquired as right-of-way.
It just strikes me that it's very much in the community benefit to orient the road the way it is and to provide the buffer areas, and it's not something we're doing as a favor to the applicant, but rather as good planning for the community.
Just to follow up the point that David just brought up, I feel a little bit differently in that I feel that if we own the property and the developer needs it for whatever reason, that it should be acquired at a fair market value or a land swap. Is that the type of direction you want in the resolution? That, or I don't, after, when I read this resolution, I got the impression that it was going to be acquired or purchased or swapped. I never thought that it would be given.
In our recommendation, we are recommending acquire, meaning negotiate.
Well, could you go a little further?
Well, we can negotiate for money, we can negotiate for land, we can negotiate for underlying, underground power lines, we can negotiate for some things that we can't require. Just call negotiations.
The second question I have, as far as the fire station goes, the way I read the resolution, the power line will be buried along the fire station? Is that what this means, what it says, to a point approximately 300 feet west of Road C? I had read that in an earlier memorandum, that you were considering requiring the developer to bury it along the side of the fire station?
Right, right. We had been discussing that earlier. This set of stipulations does not require any underground placement of that line. We felt that as we were looking at the subdivision again, looking at the ordinance, we can't require that a three-phase line be placed underground, and so we are not.
Not even near right adjacent to a fire station?
That's correct.
So I assume that's what you're going to be negotiating.
That would be a very good assumption, yes.
The suitability of the land used for recreation that Mr. Smith brought up, it said that it has to be, according to our ordinance, flat and dry and otherwise capable of accommodating active recreation uses. And just, we're all aware up here of a cluster development, but that allows a developer to size his lots smaller so that a larger portion of the development can be dedicated to recreation, rather than developing as a normal lot size that should be required under R1. Now, the reason I brought this up tonight is I just wanted to confirm that the town considers that land, even though it's in the RCD district, to be dry and flat.
No, that's, no, that's not the assumption here. There is a provision in the recreation area requirements that land be, there are suitability criteria, and you're correct, that land has to be flat and dry, the high ground rather than the low wet ground. There are provisions in the ordinance that allow the council to waive those criteria in certain circumstances for other specific purposes. If I can go back to the map here for just a moment, this isn't going to move. One of the other, the purpose that we are interested in here, and the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Greenways Commission are interested in, is the possibility of that land as a potential addition to our greenway network. As you can see on this map, this is the property that is being subdivided, again, context, NCA6 coming down here, and here is that draw that's coming through this property, and that's where the Resource Conservation District lies on this property. This is the kind of natural trail that we would hopefully at some point develop as part of our greenway network, and so the Parks and Recreation Commission was very interested in this area, this area right here, being used as part of the recreation area on the site for possible inclusion at a future time as part of our greenway network. But if I could just follow it up for just a moment, you're also correct in saying that the land as it's proposed there does not meet the suitability criteria, and so it does take an affirmative action on the part of the council to waive those suitability criteria. And so, if I could just call your attention to the resolution, either one, Resolution A or B, there is, the resolution says we approve this subdivision, and then at the end of the conditions, as a be it further resolved, that the suitability criteria be waived. The council does have to make that affirmative waiver in order for this to be acceptable, and we are recommending that you do so.
Just, you know, let's play an advocate here, a devil's advocate. If this was developed as a standard R1 subdivision, wouldn't that land, that land could not be built on anyway because it's an RCD? Why, what's the advantage of allowing a cluster development where you can group many lots on a piece of land where you can't even, you can't use the recreation space or the RCD district space anyway? I see this as a trade-off that we necessarily didn't have to make. The development would look just like that, except the lot lines would have probably have gone more into the RCD district, of which we've seen similar developments like that, but we would have had a lot less lots.
Well, there are a couple of recreation issues here, and we felt that the recreation area that is drawn here, which includes both this area of the draw and this area up here and here, we felt that this was a very appropriate and suitable recreation area. It does have this open space here, it's centrally located to the site, and it does allow the possibility of tying into a greenway through here. If this were not reserved as recreation area and the lot lines extended out into there, you're correct that because that's RCD, the houses couldn't be built any closer to it.